Which brings us now to departmental item number one. Would the clerk please read that item into the record?
Chair Hart and members of the board. Departmental item number one is from the county executive office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19 update.
Welcome Dr. Doranoso and Dr. Anzorg and Ms. Anderson.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This morning's briefing topics include our countywide data, the CDPH blueprint framework, school waivers, and face coverings. As you can see from this graph, we, as of yesterday, have 8,143 total cases with 228 active cases. Over the past two weeks, the total number of cases has increased by 9%, but as you can see, the rate of increase is gradually at a slower pace. The number of active cases decreased by 18%. We have 40, as of yesterday, we have 43 hospitalized and a total of 93 deaths. These are the new cases in the past two weeks. And again, this is the sum of all new cases in a jurisdiction in the past 14 days, and it is calculated daily. Over the past two weeks, we saw decrease in Santa Maria, Santa Barbara, Lompoc, North County, Incorporated, Galida, Montecito Carp, Orchid, and IV. Noteworthy is the increase in South County, north of Incorporated, of Galida, and Santa Following national and state trends, over the past two weeks, we are continuing to see hospitalization rates decrease, decreased by 31% over the last two weeks. Med surge rates decreased by 37.5 and ICU rates decreased by 18%. Now, I'd like to talk about the blueprint for a safer economy that was shared by our governor last Friday. So, no longer will you get to see this neat table that describes the average number test per day, the elevated disease transmission as described by case rate per 100,000 over 14 days, NOR testing positivity, increasing hospitalization, and limited hospital capacity. So, the information will be, on case rate and testing positivity, will be displayed a little bit differently. This, as you may recognize, is the new tiered framework. So here, counties will be moved to a four-tiered system with purple as tier one describing widespread transmission. Tier two is red, describing substantial transmission. Orange is moderate transmission at tier three, and tier four is minimal transmission. And, as you recall, we begin on, last week, with the assignment of Santa Barbara County being on the tier one. And in tier one, new cases exceed seven per 100,000, and it is a seven-day average with a seven-day lag. Testing positivity is over 8% in this category, again with a seven-day average and a seven-day lag. I received a question about when was the last time our county had data that showed that we were in the red. So, before we landed on the county monitoring list, we were doing pretty okay. So, this is the late, we had our first case on March 15th, and then from March 15th to the early parts of May, we were, I would consider, in the red zone if we applied these metrics to those data. But, more recently, we, on June 3rd, we did have testing positivity of 3.7 and case rate of 6.57. And this is calculation this morning by our senior epidemiologist. At the tier framework roles, the, unlike the county data monitoring list, which was calculated daily, the, the new tier system will be a weekly assignment with the first, the first assignment being September 8th. So, last week, we, we had the initial, but really, the first assignment will be on September 8th. And a county will remain on a tier for a minimum of three weeks before being able to advance to a later tier. So for us, that would be moving from purple to red. A county can only move forward one tier at a time, even if metrics qualify for a more advanced tier. And if a county's measure fall under two different tiers, a county will be assigned to the more restrictive tier. So let's say that our case rate meets the criteria for purple, but our testing positivity is in the red, we would need to be in the purple. Initial step was applied, again, on August the 28th, and the tier assignment was based on adjusted case rate and test positivity from two prior reporting periods. Tier status effective yesterday on August the 31st. If a county is initially assigned to purple tier one and has met the criteria for a less restrictive tier the prior week, the county only needs to meet the criteria for a less restrictive tier for more, for one more week to move on to red tier number two. As I mentioned earlier, September 8th assignment, a county does not need to remain in the purple tier one for three weeks. For all subsequent assessment, though, a county must remain in a tier for three weeks and meet the criteria to advance. And to advance after the September 8th assignment, a county must be in the current tier for a minimum, again, of three weeks before advancing, and that's really a critical point to remember. A county must meet criteria for the next year for both measures, the prior two consecutive weeks, in order to progress to the next year. So while we are in the purple tier, we have to demonstrate that we can meet both criteria before we can advance to red. Additional measures are being developed, and they cover health equity and health outcomes. On the health equity measures, basically, CDPH is developing measures to capture activities that a county is doing with regards to data collection, testing access, contact tracing, supportive isolation, and outreach that demonstrate a county's ability to address the most impacted communities within a county. With regards to health outcomes, measures will cover case rates, hospitalizations, and To move back, so, we are currently in the purple tier, and let's say we advance to the red tier. To move back, a county's adjusted rate and/or test positivity has been within a more restrictive tier for two consecutive weekly periods, the county will then must revert to the more restrictive tier. And as needed, the state will work with us and will, and may provide targeted interventions or countywide modifications as necessary to address impacted hospital capacity and drivers of disease transmission. And counties will have three days to implement any sector changes or closures unless extreme circumstances merit immediate action. So as of yesterday, and again, this is a weekly posting, we are at 9.0 new COVID-19 positive cases per 100,000, and our testing positivity is at 6.5. So as, to reflect the new tier system, we were able to issue a health officer order yesterday that will allow the opening of indoors operations in hair salons and barber shops, malls with occupancy limited to 25% capacity, with common areas and food court dining areas remaining closed, and libraries can reopen with limited capacity of 25% as well as retail. And, we are in the process of revising our county data dashboard to reflect all the new changes. So, we anticipate by Wednesday, we will display new metrics on our dashboard that will reflect the state's methods and metrics, which means case rate per 100,000 over a seven-day average and a seven-day lag, test positivity rate per 100,000, again, seven-day average with a seven-day lag. And, we are introducing episode date versus report date. The state is reporting out data by episode date, which means the date by which the individual displays symptoms or was tested. Currently, much of our data is based on report date, which means when we get the results from the lab or in our system. So we will note that on our new dashboard. I'd like to transition to our health officer, Dr. Anzorg, who will provide an update on school waivers.
Are there any questions for Dr. Doranoso at this time? Supervisor Hartman.
This is a big change, and you've done, I appreciate how it's applied. You've showed how the new order applies to the county, how we'll work it. But can you broaden out a bit and tell us why the state has made this change? And then I think it's always helpful if people understand what our authority is in relation to the state.
Sure. And the state, in the past few weeks, embraced or introduced this change really because it is guided by increased knowledge of disease transmission, vulnerabilities, and risk factors. And it is more reflective of how other states and nationally are capturing case rate by, by per capita. In addition to that, previously, the county data monitoring, it was a falling on and off from day to day. So we are capturing, and, and in a pandemic, disease transmission is so variable, so going from day and day, and I think we've had that conversation here with your board, that because of the variability, it makes more sense to look at it over a seven-day average. With regards to being able to move and reopen sectors, this is really incremental. The tiers allow us to reopen the sectors in a very methodical and slow-measured manner. So we are moving outside operations to indoor incrementally, 25%, then 50%, and then total. So we're doing measured reopening in order to really study and look at the impact of that measured opening. With regards to state versus local, we are a local health jurisdiction and governed by the state department of public health. So when the state issues a blueprint, and we need to abide by that. When the state issues a state health officer order, we need to abide by that as well. We can always be more restrictive, but we cannot be more lax.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Doranoso?
I have one.
Supervisor Levine.
Thank you. So, Dr. Doranoso, from what, I mean, if I'm understanding it right, so you have to stay in the purple zone a minimum of three weeks, and you have to have to meet the criteria of the next zone up for two of those weeks?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know when, yeah, go ahead.
And the reason why in the initial purple tier assignment, this has two weeks lag, so we currently have the data, or the state is crunching the data for last week, the week of the 25th, so we're in arrears.
Okay. So can you tell us when, when, when did we meet the criteria in the past? Because I'm looking at the numbers now, and I, unless they drop significantly, it's going to be a while before we get to the red zone. Do you know when, when we actually met that criteria, criteria for red?
Yes. And we looked at the data. My senior epidemiologist, Joy Kane, looked at the data this morning with her team, and we found that using episode date, so using the state methods and metrics, on June 3rd, we had testing positivity of 3.7 and case rate of 6.57. And again, that's a single date instead of a seven-day average. And so with that date, that would land us in that tier two. So if we had experienced 6-3 over six additional days, then we would be in tier two.
Okay. And then, the difference between tier two, so the red, so I don't want to get, I mean, I'm just trying to manage expectations here. So when you go from purple to red, just so folks understand, what is the benefit? From what I understood, it was restaurants could open inside with 25% capacity, and I'm not sure what the other benefits were to move into the next tier.
Sure. So, right now, in purple tier, the retail is opened indoors at 25% capacity. On the red tier, it will be 50% capacity. The same thing with shopping centers, and, let me see. Places of worship can open indoors with modification at 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is fewer. Movie theaters in tier two can open indoors with modification at 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is fewer. Gyms and fitness centers, I can go down the list.
Actually, I think it's really helpful to go ahead and go down the list.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Thank you.
Gyms and fitness centers at, in tier two can open indoors with modification at 10% capacity. Restaurants can open indoors with modification at 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is And, that is it.
There's also the K-12 schools.
Oh, and schools, I'm sorry. And, Dr. Anzorg's passion, schools.
Any other questions for Dr. Doranoso at this time?
Well, I don't know that it's a question, Mr. Chair, but I'm just going to make the observation that, you know, if any of these restaurants were, were having 25% capacity days many, many times before they started, or a gym had a 10% capacity, they probably would have closed their doors without COVID-19. So, you know, the, these, these criteria are, they're, they're nice, I guess, but they're, they're not going to do anybody any good. So, I'm sure you'll hear from, from people that have businesses that, that are not going to be able to operate at those levels, and if they're sustained levels, you're going to lose a lot of businesses over it.
Well, I guess I just would add that restaurants are open now outdoors, and having additional capacity even at 25% is going to make a big difference for the successful operation of those restaurants. And it isn't what we'd all like to see, but it is progress, and that's really important. And I think it's evidence that, you know, what everybody is doing together to reduce the spread of the virus is having an effect, a positive effect. And I think the advantage of this new system is that it does provide some transparency to the process going forward. You know, it clearly isn't linked to dates and time because it's dependent on the level of the presence of the virus in the community and the spread. But if, you know, I was a businessperson, I would be glad to see a pathway that provides me some understanding of what, how things move from the next tier to the next. Previously, we had the monitoring list that was a toggle switch on or off, and there was no transparency as to what would happen after a county was to get off the monitoring list. And so, this system, as complex and difficult to understand initially, is, is an improvement on the old system from that perspective.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could follow up on that, you know, up here in the north, we have unmodified winter, you know, compared to many places in the United States, it's, it's not that bad, but still, nobody wants to eat outside. Maybe in Santa Barbara, they, they don't have winter, and you can still continue to serve people food outside during the winter, but I don't, I don't know that the 25% in, inside is going to be something that's actually going to help a restaurant after it starts to cool down here pretty soon.
Well, it is September 1st, and we're talking about a point in time, and ideally, you know, we're going to progress and not be where we are today in a month and a half if everybody continues to wear masks and practice social distancing and wash their hands. And if there aren't any other questions, let's, Supervisor Levine.
I have one more question. Supervisor, I do. And, Dr. Doranoso, I don't know if in your dealings with the state, there was any discussion about this criteria. I'm just curious of why the criteria doesn't really, I mean, from what we were told from the beginning till now, it was all about flattening the curve and stopping the overflow for our medical industry. And with hospitalizations, if you showed, and med surge beds dropping and ICU beds moving in the correct, in the right direction, was there any talk at the state about why we aren't basing our criteria off of hospitalizations and ICU and med surge beds?
No, I don't recall that conversation. Dr. Anzorg, do you recall any of that?
I do. The problem with hospitalizations is that they usually lag behind the new infections. So, it's, it's something that always has to be taken into consideration. If the case rate goes down, a couple of weeks later, the hospitalizations will go down automatically and vice versa. So therefore, the driving force is really the transmission, and these metrics are the ways to differentiate between widespread and significant and lower transmission rates mathematically. And, so, also, this new metric system was a clear response to lessons learned in the past, because when we opened, I always say fire hose style, right after Memorial Day, we saw a very significant surge in the whole state and also in Santa Barbara County. And, the state is now trying to backpaddle on that, and the new version of opening up should not be everything at once, but in a more gradual fashion to avoid another of these spikes that we've experienced after Memorial Day. So that is the main explanation in my understanding.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, I'm just gonna, I think there's, I don't disagree with folks who have problems with this framework, but I'm going to quote a very wise woman that, that once told me, "It's all about attitude." And that I think we should be constructive about, that it points in a direction, it's incremental, it should provide us with motivation, whether we are from the group of folks that are most worried about the disease or most worried about the adaptation, we should all be, be united by the framework in attempting to reduce transmissions, either so that we can reduce the dangers to society, which I think is a good reason, or so that we can reduce the social, economic, and mental health effects to society, which also is a valid reason. The only way we're going to get out of this is to reduce transmission, and the, particularly the many parents out there that are worried, this should provide a huge amount of motivation for them and the rest of society to support our kids, to support our businesses, to support vulnerable populations. We've got to stay focused on areas of greater transmission and reduce, and continue to reduce our numbers.
I think that's a perfect segue to Dr. Anzorg, who's going to talk about one of the best tools that we have, which is our simple masks. Dr. Anzorg?
Oh, I think we're going to briefly cover school waivers first.
Okay, that's okay. So, as of last Tuesday, we posted our approval process for elementary school waivers, and we've received 14 as of yesterday. 10 have been reviewed by our review committee, which consists of a pediatrician that we hired for this purpose, as well as an epidemiologist. And after the review, every single application will be, again, the review will be finalized by Dr. Von Doranoso and myself, and then will be forwarded to the state for final verdict, so to speak. And we are anticipating to send the first 10 out by the middle of this week up to the state. And the three of those 10 still had some remaining questions to be answered, but they're very proactive in doing so. So we anticipate that we can forward 10 this week and the remaining four by the beginning of next week. We are happy to, or we are pleased, that also two public school districts have applied for the waiver so far, not just private schools, but we understand that smaller schools have it easier to go through this application process because they have less consultation to do with teacher, teachers' unions, and parent organizations and so forth, which is obviously more time-consuming if you have a large school district opposed to a smaller private school. We have a very comprehensive lab referral system established for our schools to, even for these ones that are applying for the waiver right now, consisting of two community-based testing stations, three across the county. The one in Santa Barbara has moved to Galida as of yesterday, and there is one in Bruton and one in Santa Maria. In addition to that, teachers will have the opportunity, they will have two hours reserved for being tested at our county healthcare centers in Lompoc, Santa Maria, and Santa Barbara as well. Multiple schools have already started the process of getting into a contract with a private lab, and will have the labs completed necessary surveillance testing. And because the testing landscape is rapidly evolving, we are really hopeful that in the very near future, self-collection of saliva samples will be widely available, and that will help out our teachers enormously because it will be much more convenient to self-collect a little bit of saliva at home and then have it processed at a lab. All schools K to 12 will be All schools K-12 will be allowed to open once we have less virus transmission, which is going to be in the red zone. I would like to speak on masks because we have gone a long way. At the beginning of the pandemic, I, I'm guilty myself of having had a significant initial hesitation against the wearing of masks. That was under a very different scenario and in light of a scarcity of evidence for the benefits. Now that this has been a worldwide pandemic going on for more than nine months, initially starting in Asia, obviously, there's much more evidence out there. So there is very clear evidence now that wearing a mask for the general public is clearly favorable. Masks do not have to be perfect to be effective. That's a very important message that I want to also stress today because recently, there has been some news, a recent small study, very small study, is frequently quoted as recommending certain masks versus others, and that is very reasonable. I did bring some samples here myself for the board to review. The most effective mask, obviously, is the famous N95, which is designed for healthcare workers. Myself at the tuberculosis clinic have worn this for a long time. Whenever I'm exposed to very contagious patient, obviously, it is fitted, it comes in different sizes, and it is very well sealed. The downside of this mask is it is, if you have to wear it for prolonged periods, it can become quite uncomfortable. And therefore, there are masks available that are actually N95s. However, they have an expiration valve. The problem with that is they were designed for construction workers and for people with environmental exposures to wood smoke, for instance, in our wildfires. They are very helpful to protect the wearer from those particles and harmful air. However, they do release our outbreath, and therefore, they are not a good source control if we want to prevent that the outbreath goes into our surroundings. Therefore, we do not recommend these masks. Keep them at a safe place, don't discard them because fire season is never far away in California, as we know. And the second best mask after the N95, which we would like to reserve for our hospital and first responders for obvious reasons, are these very simple so-called surgical masks. They are three-layered, and they have a little metal band up here that can be adjusted over the nose and therefore have a much better fit than masks made out of cloth material. They are surprisingly protective also to the wearer. So they are not just an excellent source control, meaning protecting my environment from my own respiratory droplets, but they also protect the wearer from other droplets, almost as well as an N95. Now, people have become very creative and have designed very pretty ones. This one here, Superhero Woman, was designed for our director by her niece, which I find very endearing and very fitting. So Wonder Woman, Supergirl, Batgirl, and I don't know who else. Anyway, these masks are usually made out of cotton, two-layered cotton is perfectly appropriate. The studies show that they reduce a lot of droplets being expelled into the surroundings. Other materials are microfiber, for instance, combined with cotton work really well as well. Other people have included certain filter material as a third layer in between the cotton and polypropylene layers, which are also very effective. So I already recommended against the use of this during the pandemic. It's very good for smoke exposure. And then a lot of runners or very outdoor activity-inclined folks are using these neckaters, which are very comfortable to wear. They are better than no mask, don't get me wrong. However, the material used is called spandex or elastin, and the nature of it is that you don't sweat so much underneath because it lets moisture through. So it is kind of porous, and therefore, is not the optimal material for a mask. But don't get me wrong, wearing one of these or a bandana, which has a poor fit and therefore lets more air out, are still better than no mask. I always say masks don't have to be perfect to work. The most important part is that a lot of people wear them and wear them on a regular basis. That makes a huge difference. There are calculations have been made that they reduce infection by huge amounts. Some people have gone as far as to say that if everybody had worn the mask from the get-go, we may have avoided 100,000 deaths in the United States. So there are, of course, numbers out there that I don't know whether they can really be, you know, absolutely true. However, we do know that masks have a huge impact on the transmission of the virus, in particular because the worst virus spreaders are asymptomatic spreaders. They don't know that they carry the virus because they don't feel sick, they feel well. And if they go and mix and mingle with people and speak and laugh and spread their droplets, they are very contagious. And therefore, source control with masks is hugely successful. And I cannot stress this enough, how important this measure has become. And I do understand that there are some controversies about this. Certain social media groups are against it, but usually, not because of scientific evidence, but because of their objection is due to ideological reasons. And I, we have a mandate since middle of June from the state and from our local health jurisdiction to wear masks in public places. And I see more and more signs, and I am very hopeful that this will propel us into a state of less transmissions. And I just would urge everybody to abide by this. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Williams?
Just a question about your opinion. You know, the, you, you mentioned the three-ply masks. My wife, who sews these masks, has become a practitioner of the WHO guidelines on the three-ply masks. Does that make sense to you, that, that the best homemade mask would be one that has one layer that's, catch essentially less moisture porous than, than another? So for, for the many mask, homemade mask crusaders, people that are making masks at home, at this point in the thousands in this community, is that what you would recommend? Is that, those guidelines make sense to you?
They do make sense. And per this most recent study, anything, at least a double layer of cotton or cotton mixed with polypropylene, which is a microfiber, is excellent. And if, if an additional third layer is included, that will just improve the quality of the material, of the overall effect.
Supervisor Hartman?
Are there certain people who should not wear masks?
Yes, children under the age of two. It is absolutely contraindicated for them to wear masks. It's dangerous, not because, yeah. And I was going to say, not because the, the expirations that cannot really filter through the mask, they can, but little children shouldn't wear masks. They have a very different upper respiratory tract, and they're very sensitive to any obstruction, and that can be dangerous. And then there are certain people who have severe lung disease that might need medical exemption from their doctor or medical provider. And then there are some people who cannot wear it because of anxiety or like claustrophobias and that's more emotional reason why they don't feel comfortable wearing a mask.
You know, there's a couple of myths that have been perpetuated and are actually, we heard some last week in our discussion, is that wearing a mask increases the carbon dioxide that you breathe and that that will make you sick. Could you speak to that myth?
Yeah, there, there is absolutely no evidence, scientific evidence, supporting this claim.
And then others have said that if you're wearing a mask, you don't have to practice physical distancing, and that's not what you have recommended.
No, that's not what we would recommend. All measures combined have the best, the highest benefit, obviously. But if we had to grade it, what is most important, hand washing, social distancing, or wearing a mask? If we could only one of the, do one of the three, I would recommend the mask. Having said that, it is still more effective if you keep a social distance of six feet from others.
Thank you for that. Are there other questions for Dr. Anzor?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Adam?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, there's, there's exemptions for, for people who have medical needs to, to not be wearing a mask, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I just want to thank all of the members of the Santa Barbara Mask Network who have been working as Supervisor Williams's spouse has been doing to create masks for our community and distribute those to folks who need. It's incredibly important work. I know that at a certain point, even prisoners in the county jail were helping in that extra effort. So there's a lot of community spirit and goodwill, and it's making a big difference having those masks available to everybody and becoming a fashion statement, as Dr. De Renosa's niece provided her one. So I think next in the presentation is Ms. Anderson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here to give you an update on the RISE Business Recovery since the last meeting. So we've had a few changes from the state. On August 25th, they issued new guidance for cohorts, and this updated guidance for schools, daycares, day camps, and higher education as well. And then on August 28th, last Friday, the state announced the new tier framework, which was detailed by our Public Health Director. To coordinate this update from the state side, the county issued a health officer order yesterday, effective August 31st, that supports the tier framework. As the Public Health Director indicated, we, Santa Barbara County, it falls under Tier One or purple. The sector changes that were effective yesterday, our hair salons, barber shops are open indoors with modifications, all retail are open indoors with modifications at max 25% capacity. Shopping malls are open indoors with modifications at max 25% capacity, closed common areas, and closed food courts. The next assessment for tier change is September 8th, next Tuesday. I did want to let your board and the public know that there are ways to look on the state website to know how your business is affected. Two, two different ways in particular. This first way is just right off the Blueprint for Safer Economy website, where you can key in your county and your respective business or activity, and then it will provide you the current status. And here's kind of another shot of what that looks like on the activity. It's a little bit more detailed than the sector guidelines are, and you would indicate which activity that you're looking for. And how it reflects is that, for example, this is County of Santa Barbara for auto repair shops, it's in the purple, and at the bottom, it tells you that they can open with modifications and shows the, directs them to the industry guidance. The second way that the state is providing this information, and I would encourage businesses to look at this, is the outlook. So this matches our industry sector definitions on our website, that is the titles of the guidance essentially. But it shows what happens to each sector, whether it's the Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, or Tier Four. So it's about a five-page document, and I would encourage businesses to take a look to see how they're impacted in the future, should the county change to a different tier. All of this information has been linked on our recoverySBC.org website and continues to be updated on a daily basis as needed. As of Friday, August 28th, we have 4,026 businesses submitting countywide. Our top three sectors continue to be dine-in restaurants, retails, and office workspaces. I did want to remind the public that we do have, in the unincorporated areas, and I, and many of the cities are doing the same, options to open to the public right-of-ways and private property such as parking lots. Currently, we have 20 applications approved or issued for the public right-of-ways and nine for the private property. The RISE Ambassador program continues to be very popular. We do have new contact information we wanted to get out there. The new number is 805-681-5508, and the email address has been established as riseambassador@countyofsb.org. And again, these folks are out in our community, helping educate businesses and provide information throughout the whole community. Also wanted to remind the public that we do have a violation report online at our recoverySBC.org. If you enter the information, it is distributed to the appropriate agency that monitors that particular type of business. Did want to update your board as well on the three county-sponsored community resource programs for the unincorporated areas that were launched either this week or over the last two weeks. We did have a small business grant through the SB Foundation. There was $309,000 for this particular program. We had up to 7,500 issued per business. These, these businesses had to be self-certified through the RISE program. This closed at 5:00 PM yesterday, and as of yesterday morning, it's not final, but we had 38 applications, and we anticipated a max of 40 issues. We, I suspect we're going to be issuing that full amount. Also, this week launched, so we don't have any numbers yet, but we'll continue to report on this, the Rental Assistance Program and the Disaster Assistance Grant Program through United Way. These will, these have been issued as, again, this week, so they are going to be out in the community and available, and we'll keep you updated on the numbers as they come in. And here's our updated contact information at our recoverySBC.org. Just a reminder that everything that you've seen today is available on that website, and we do keep it updated. And we do have new contact information for the RISE ambassadors, so I want to make sure everyone was aware of that. And with that, I'd happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, and thank you for working so hard to work directly and closely with all the business sectors to keep them apprised of this very rapidly changing regulatory environment. I know that is a real challenge. Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you. The question I have has to do with the change in the framework for the state and how that affects our RISE guide and, and the attestations that have been submitted by the businesses.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman, through the chair. The guidelines are actually still the same. So they've already attested, businesses are, if they haven't attested, they need to go through that process, but the guidelines have not changed. We update those as they come through. This is simply giving them more guidance as to how far they can reopen, what their restrictions are, and when. So, and we keep that updated to match the state.
Supervisor Williams?
I just wanted to highlight the option that people don't normally think about is, going out into the is going out into the parking lot of a private mall. Obviously, you've got to work that out with your property owner if you're a tenant. But if there is a zoning question or stumbling block, we're willing to help, correct? Meaning, you're able to do that even if that would reduce your parking ratio? Is that, would that be a problem?
Supervisor Williams, through the chair. There are specific things that the Planning and Development Department have to look at, along with public works, depending on what they're looking for. So I'd encourage them to contact those permittinging at those numbers that are both in Santa Barbara and Santa Maria, just to find out what their options are.
Meaning, the department would look at the fact that if there are some businesses that are temporarily closed, there's less parking demand, therefore, more willingness to have flexibility in that regard?
That's correct.
Okay, that's important. And then the other thing is, you know, it was mentioned, but maybe without a sheriff's rep today, it would be good just to ask the CEO or the Public Health Department that the big community concern right now, I think, is more people in Isla Vista right now. And as a former Isla Vista, and I can tell you, Isla Vista is not the source of all bad things in the universe. It really isn't. People there can be rational human beings. So what is our messaging? What is our strategy on making sure that we don't have that as a new outbreak spot? So maybe I'm calling you back, Von.
I think about, so it's been about, what, four or five weeks when I reported to the board about the increase in cases. And we're seeing, as anticipated, a downward trend in Isla Vista. And I think that has a lot to do with the call to action of UCSB, the county, as well as the community in being united and saying, "Don't do physical distance. Don't gather. Wear your mask. Wash your hands." And really working with the community and the school to dissuade coming back into the community unnecessarily. So I think that the community working together is, has, we're making traction in preventing that. And I know that also there are ambassadors as well in the community, talking with the community members about that as well.
CEO Mia Santa?
Supervisor Williams, through the chair. I wanted just to let Supervisor Hartman say a few words. Her office has been very active, involving our office as well, with the university, with the community members. We've had discussions with the sheriff's office about compliance to provide reeducation to people who may not be from Santa Barbara County or living in Isla Vista, about the health order, about the importance of wearing masks and not gathering, and that continues. And again, having conversations with the university.
Supervisor Hartman?
Well, I think that sums it up. We are working very closely with UCSB, their health department, their administration. We need to work more closely with City College, and that's in the works. I appreciate all the work that Associated Students is doing and the CSD is doing. They've been very, very active in social media and promoting the message of social distancing and mask-wearing and gatherings. We are expanding the ambassador program, which has been focused on businesses. At least, what we're trying to do is develop it for place-based neighborhoods, so that we have somebody who's out there educating people within different blocks about safety and health and responsibility. And so that is something that I'm very excited about. And we did talk last week about a change in ordinance so that we have something between, you know, sheriff's enforcement that's criminal and just trying to, moral suasion. So we've got something in there. But we'll see what happens with that ordinance. But I really believe that Isla Vista is going to be a model. We see that universities and colleges throughout the country are having difficulty. It's hard. Many of the returning freshmen, they were denied their graduation, and now they are denied their freshman year, or they come back. And their, social development at that age is really critical. So this is extremely difficult. But we have student leaders out there who are really taking the message seriously and working with their peers. And what's really exciting is there's a lot of research at UCSB that I hope we can be a pilot and we can be a model for the rest of the country. So that's what we're working on.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman. Thank you for your leadership on that important issue.
Yeah, thank you, John, for digging in there.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, well, that brings us to the end. Oh, actually, we have a public comment, yes.
Yes, Chair Hart and members of the board, we have two requests to speak on this item. We're going to begin with Andy Caldwell, to be followed by Teri Strickland.
Chair Hart, members of the board, Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. We were very disappointed in the governor's latest actions, and I think that Supervisor Lavignino pretty much hit the nail on the head. The original purpose, the one purpose of shutting down our economy that was stated was to flatten the curve, to create surge capacity in hospitals. That was the whole justification for it. And as you well know, over the last couple of weeks, the number of hospitalizations in the region, especially in the state as a whole, started to plummet. And so what did he do? He did not move the goalpost, he removed the goalpost. So does this mean that hospitals can now fill their rooms up with non-COVID patients, since it's no longer criteria? Because they're losing. Hospitals in America have lost hundreds of billions of dollars by leaving those rooms empty. And the bottom line here is, you guys are talking about, "Well, the science says this, and the science says that." California wants to treat all cases the same. Asymptomatic, those that are mild? Well, the CDC just revised their guidelines. Again, the CDC, not your speakers last week. But the CDC has questioned, "Why are you testing asymptomatic cases?" Because what does it do for you? Yes, they're asymptomatic, but so what? Even, the question is, is what does a test for an asymptomatic or citing somebody in a case statistic as positive when they're asymptomatic, what does that do? And it's the same thing with the testing regimen. If you test somebody, they're negative today. An hour later, they can be positive. The truth is, MIT had a saliva test strip that was 50% to 80% effective. It cost $2, and they didn't need to send it to a lab. You could have done it at home. And the FDA rejected that. That is a huge problem. The, you know, the bottom line here is, we need to start treating these different because, again, never in the history of mankind have we thought that we could stop a virus by wearing masks or anything else. And the point is, is there is a lot of people that are wearing masks and social distancing and all the rest. What they're doing is not working. And if you look at our case rates compared to Sweden and other countries, we didn't do any better than them, and they did a lot less than we have. And, you know, the bottom line here is that businesses that read these criteria and know that there is no certainty in terms of a business plan going forward, most of them should just close their doors right now, as Peter Adams said. You have a 3% to 5% profit margin in most businesses. They cannot live with the uncertainty, and they certainly can't live with a capacity cap of 10% or 25% indefinitely. Because if you look at those criterias, the one truthful thing Newsom said is, "I want a therapeutic or a vaccine before we're allowed to reopen completely." And there is no end game, or that is not in our sights right now. And you're killing the economy, you're hurting people. There are all sorts of other problems, including suicide, depression, alcoholism, drug abuse, and the like that are going on right now that is never counted and never reported on in these hearings. And I think you need to present the whole picture. And I wish that you would, like other counties are doing, would start pushing back against the governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
And we will now go to Teri Strickland, who is our final speaker.
Chair Hart and board members, this is Teri Strickland. I sent you all an email a few days ago, and the first line of that email said, quote, "I've had a couple of days to cool off after watching our governor's press conference on driving, when the public and most business owners I know were looking forward to some easing up of the guidelines." Well, after watching this presentation this morning, I'm not cooled off anymore. I can't believe that you're not upset that the governor has moved the goalpost again on it. This is not progress, Chair Hart. This is going backwards. You know, what, you know, started out as this 14-day shutdown to flatten the curve and let our hospitals get repaired is now, six months later, lost jobs, lost business revenue, lost businesses, no access to schools for our kids who desperately need their education and their friends, and the lives that have been lost due to suicides from depression, illnesses not treated because people are afraid to leave their homes and go to the hospital. Not to mention, we can't even worship in our churches. I hate that you pass the buck off to the governor, that you have no power in this, you have to do what he says. No, you can fight back. Fight back for your constituents, for your businesses, for this community. You're the ones that have the power to do that. And this governor has shown that he can be pushed back. Other counties have done it. You know, are you trying to destroy the economy of Santa Barbara County? Because that's what this is doing. You know, we should be happy? Businesses should be happy that you're going to, maybe in three or four weeks, let us have 25% business back inside? You know, restaurant owners I know, this doesn't work for them. They can't survive this way. I don't know why you think this is okay, that we can just put people outside and then maybe have 25% inside? You know, this is ridiculous, and you know it. And when the CDC, you know, released these new figures that talked about how many actual deaths there are from COVID, not with COVID, and I didn't hear you mention any of this, no mention of the CDC report. You want to talk about cases all the time. No respect, Dr. Anzor, but there are a lot of people in the medical community that disagree with you. ICU and deaths are the most important metrics. And both the county and the state have seen these in decline for weeks. For us to go backwards on this is a slap in the face to everybody, you know, to make things more restrictive. You know, we were better off when we first opened, when they said six-foot spacing, you know, inside restaurants. You know, we get to the red level if we're lucky, and we'll be at 25% capacity, which is a whole different ballgame. It's not doable for most restaurants. And did anybody talk about what's missing from the governor's new metrics? Green, there's no green. How about a green level, a gold level? You know, even without this new information from the CDC, the governor had no reason to make these metrics stricter. You know that, and I know that, and everybody else knows that.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland. The matter is to the board. Any comments?
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Adam?
Well, to answer Ms. Strickland, you know, we don't make the rules. And I agree wholeheartedly with you that this is a foolish strategy. It's not designed to take into account, you know, you've got to pick a strategy here. You've got to pick herd immunity, or you've got to pick vaccine. And for me, understanding the way that vaccines work in cattle herds, you know, I'd pick herd immunity anytime. I've tried to proffer that as a strategy and been rejected. And we're going to go down this other road. And there's going to be economic devastation at the end of it. I think many of the people that are pushing this strategy don't understand how business actually works. And this society, in my opinion, is going to pay a price for that. And I guess we get what we get. So there's no relief in sight for the business community, and they should make plans accordingly.
Thank you, Supervisor Adam. Any other comments?
Supervisor Williams? I continue to believe that one of the most important folks that our future direction hangs in the balance for is our community's children. And I don't think, you know, maybe an answer to the speaker, I don't think temper tantrums help our kids. I don't think, I think constructive progress within the framework, whether or not we agree with the framework, but to reduce transmissions is the one thing that can help improve both the health outcomes and the mental health outcomes for these communities' children. And I think it's just important, when the frustration of this crisis comes to fore in anybody's mind, to keep the big picture in mind that there is improvements that will take place with lower transmission. And so we all have a role in this society to make sure that we reduce transmission rates.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Supervisor Lavignino?
Thank you. And I don't know, you know, maybe there's a disconnect, there must be, between what we're hearing and what you guys are hearing. Because to classify a business owner who's been in business for, I don't know, 50 years, 60 years, who's now being forced to make decisions without really feeling that their voice is being heard, yeah, they're going to be frustrated. But to classify it as a temper tantrum, you know, that doesn't sit real well up here. We've got a lot of people...
I think you misunderstood what I just said. The speaker asked for us to have a temper tantrum, and I'm just saying, us having a temper tantrum, in my view, does not productively move the goal, does not move towards our goals.
Well, and I'm trying to figure out what will, though, because that's what people, that's the questions we're getting is... I think Nancy is doing an outstanding job on the business side of things, of what she's, you know, how she has to take these rules and get it out to the community and to businesses. And, you know, the fact that salons were thrown a bone, I think that was straight up, just because, I mean, nothing's changed. Nothing's changed in the last month that would have made the governor decide, "Okay, we're going to change the rules on salons," except pressure. I got more emails, more phone calls from salon owners and barbers than I have from anybody. And I think they basically overwhelmed the Capitol and made the governor make a different decision. But I agree with Supervisor Adam that if you're a business owner right now, and you're a gym owner, you're a movie theater owner, you're a restaurant owner, and not all restaurants, you know, we say, "Well, you can be outside." Well, not everybody can be outside right now. Some businesses aren't configured where they can actually serve outside. Some are lucky enough that they have property around them that they could. Some are lucky enough that they have property around them that they could. Others can't. And I just think we need to let people understand that the way I look at these numbers, the way we see things set up, I think they need to prepare themselves accordingly, that they aren't going to be opening next week, or the week after, or the week after, or the week after. This is the long haul. And I think this is exactly what the governor's message is, is that if you look at where we are in the purple, and even if you got to the red, which for me, I think is a big stretch, even if you got to the red, and I'm trying to be positive, we get to the red, you're in the red for another month, for at least three weeks, and you've got to meet the next criteria, which is even lower. So, unless, for some reason, this virus decides to leave Santa Barbara County on its own, I really can understand the frustration of those who own a business that are trying to make ends meet. And so, when they come, and they come before us, and they're visibly, and you can tell that they are upset, and I get, I've received more phone calls from business owners in the last six weeks than I probably have in the last 10 years. You know, I think we really have to take that into consideration, and we really have to listen and hear what they have to say. And I understand that we can't go up with pitchforks and lighted candles to the state Capitol, because I really haven't seen, if I had seen a county that had pulled that strategy off and made it work, then I could understand that. But I also understand that the governor's got CARES Act funding that he holds over our head, that is how we move ourselves out of this. And so, yes, he has the big, he's got the big prize at the end. But there is a balancing act, and I think it's that we have to understand that we tell our business owners, "Yes, we understand where you're coming from. We hear you." And we have a little empathy and a little sympathy.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Adam?
Yeah, I'm actually surprised that there hasn't been some kind of a class-action lawsuit by particularly restaurants, but gyms and other businesses that are being asked to close here, and even churches. I mean, you know, these are kind of fundamental rights to operate a business. And, you know, just to wrap back around, I don't want to be repetitive, but to wrap back around and tie it together, you know, we were asked to shut everything down for two weeks to begin with, to flatten the curve. And then, you know, if you look at the curve on a longer basis, and I would encourage us to, our Public Health Department, to do a longer look on those slides of slide three and four, and watch that curve fall down. And, you know, at some point, the governor has to say, you know, "Mission accomplished. Curve's flattened. We've got to open up again." And that's what, there's a lot of states doing that. It seems unique that California is poised to continue this strategy of lockdown and trying to prevent the disease from moving through our population, especially our younger population, who will give you, paradoxically, the herd immunity that you need to stop the virus from spreading ultimately, without much risk to the society as a whole. And I know I'm going to get some more hate mail, you know, save it. I'm not playing. You know, I have my opinion, and I'm going to say it. I've got 122 days left, and you're going to hear it. So, you know, and all of you who agree with me, and I appreciate what I say, you can keep sending me the mail. But all the hate mail can just, 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 don't send it. But I'm hoping that somebody sues the governor at some point. It's been suggested to me that we do that, and I think we don't have any damages and we don't have any standing, is why we don't do that. So, I think it's going to be up to, you know, maybe restaurant associations, or Chamber of Commerce, or somebody to do that. But I don't see an end. So, either, you know, if you're a small business, you've got a fork in the road here. You've got to get aggressive and do something, or shut it down, or hunker down and see how long it takes. Because I don't see this being reopened in a reasonable period of time, absent some motivation for the governor.
Well, we have a lot of crystal balls today. And in two weeks, on September 8th, we will have the state's first report card on our status, and we'll find out what happened in two weeks. We don't have a board meeting next week, but we will know a lot more in two weeks. And the one thing we do know today that everybody, I think, agrees on is that, as Dr. Anzorg said, the best strategy for everybody is to wear masks as often as possible and to keep physical distance from other people. And that is the way, over the past month, the numbers statewide and in Santa Barbara County have dramatically dropped and given us a path forward to moving to a lower tier, as the county of San Diego, one of the largest counties in the state of California, has already achieved. So, I think there is reason for optimism. No one is satisfied with the status quo and the effect that that's having on the economy and businesses. And we all want that to improve as fast as possible. And the tool that every single one of us has on a daily basis to achieve that is wearing a mask and practicing physical distancing. So, is there a motion on this item?
No move.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Lavenino?
Aye.
Chair Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll take a 10-minute break and come back at 5 till.